I'd be honored, I'd be honored, thank you.
All right, I'll wait for Rob to sit down.
Hey.
Sweeney.
Oh, yes, working six days a week.
All right. All right, it is Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven P. M. We will call the City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Councilman Curly, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for letting us be here tonight. We would ask that we would conduct ourselves as you would be pleased that we would do that. We would ask that you would be with all those folks who are, need your help and who've asked for your help. Bless the city, Lord, bless East Point. We ask all these things in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Curly.
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Here.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes, here.
All right, approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
No.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the first hearing of the public. The first hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Good evening, City Council. Attorney David Rudoy, I represent Holistic Health Wayne, one of the applicants for the marijuana license. I felt the need to come here and speak. My understanding is that there have been some sort of communications to the city that there are parties intending on filing suit regarding the, you know, decision or, I guess it wasn't a final decision, but the, based on the last meeting, special meeting regarding the possibility of recreational marijuana and the way that the city was attempting to go. My belief is that such a threat is an attempt to bully the city and is baseless and is unlikely. I, I, my opinion would be that it would be malpractice for any attorney to advise their client to sue the city based on the fact that there was already a competitive process done in this city. The case law is very deep. I did write up a brief that I gave to Mr. Albright. I did bring hard copies. I believe he distributed it to everybody analyzing the case law that currently exists. The case law has been given great deference to cities to decide on their competitive process. The city's competitive process that already took place was very well done. The case law, when you, when you look through it, even emphasizes the fact that an applicant who actually paid an application fee doesn't really have any standing to sue in, in these situations. And that's even when there was an actual applicant. And so, and there's quite a bit of precedence as well, like within the MRTMA, they gave favoritism originally only, only allowing medical licensees to even apply for recreational licensing. There's actually a part of the law that would restrict cities from preventing recreational and medical licensees from staying in the same building. So you can see it within the law itself. I list out all the different cities that have passed similar conversion ordinances. Not a single one of those conversion ordinances was successfully challenged that made it past the summary disposition stage. You can't find a, a court of appeals case because no lawyer thought it appropriate to try to appeal the issue. But when you do look at the-
Thirty seconds?
When you do look at the cases in the Court of Appeals, it is, at Supreme Court, it's very clear, great deference is given to the city. The city should not be worried about such threats. They are baseless, and I don't believe that they are real. I think they are an attempt to bully the city, to change their mind from somebody who didn't win the first time and didn't meet the city's criteria the first time the city had the competitive process. Thank you very much, and I thank the City Council for taking so much time and consideration on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening to this honorable council. My name is Will DeSessa. I'm here on behalf of Common Citizen, which is another one of the entities that successfully obtained approvals to move forward with the construction of a medical marijuana facility in East Point. I thank the council and the community for the opportunity to be here. I'm here today because I know the city is considering whether to enter the recreational adult use marijuana market, and if it does, how it could best craft a legislative framework for licensing adult use establishments. Now, Michigan is the second largest marijuana market in the country, but as of last month, sales of medical marijuana products have plummeted to a mere point three-two percent of the open market. The medical market is on its last breaths, and businesses like Common Citizen, which so far has poured about a quarter of a million dollars into its investment with the city in its endeavor to benefit the city, are at risk. But East Point has the opportunity to save its medical businesses and to help its people in the process. The excise tax collected with sales of adult use marijuana products goes in part toward the municipalities that participate in the market. In February of this year, that was a roughly eighty-seven million dollar distribution to qualifying municipalities. And part of those funds would, without question, serve the East Point community well. Participation in the adult use marijuana market seems then the logical choice. That brings us to the next question of how to select those entities that should receive the adult use licenses. The city could start the licensing process anew, but obviously that poses a great deal of risk. Litigation from unsuccessful applicants, expenditure of the city's valuable time and resources, drafting, implementing, and overseeing a new competitive process, and all the whiles of the, the entities that have worked to obtain the approvals for medical licensure will suffer. Instead, I would propose, as others have before me, that the city should legislatively authorize existing holders of medical marijuana approvals to receive approvals necessary to operate equivalent corresponding adult use facilities. This is nothing new. Many other municipalities have adopted these same conversion mechanisms, including but not limited to Orion, Marengo, Lapeer, Bedford, and Waterford. And while I have tried also to find legal challenges to the conversion aspects of those ordinances, I have found none. Now, what about the MRTMA competitive process requirement? Well, the city already has used a legally viable competitive process in selecting the medical licensees, and its selection criteria mirror those that have been used and defended in many other communities. There is no reason why the results of that competitive process should not suffice to satisfy state law. And while I will not cite the wealth of case law defending a city's broad authority to craft licensing criteria to fit the unique needs of each community, I will point out that just this month, in Exclusive Capital Partners LLC versus City of Royal Oak-
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you, sir. The Court of Appeals has effectively held that so long as the relevant competitive criteria do not run afoul of Michigan law, a municipality does not violate MRTMA's competitive process mandate by applying them to an adult use license selection process, even if the municipality did not intend to evaluate applicants to determine which would be best suited to operate in compliance with MRTMA in particular when implementing that competitive process. So with that, I would echo the comments of Mr. Rudoy. I believe that a conversion-style licensing framework built from the city's previous competitive process would be legally protected.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Carol Reed, lifelong resident of East Point, Michigan. I'm here again to talk about the road diet. I think the three people on this council are pushing this agenda on people, and I do believe this is infringing on my right to travel without government interference. I'm a handicapped person, although you can't tell by looking at me. I've had seven operations on my legs. I can't hardly walk to the grocery store and walk back to my house without a bathroom being around. So I don't think there's a lot of people walking outside today, and I believe that you're putting pedestrians and bike people ahead of the drivers, and it's gonna just not be good for the city. The business owners don't want it, the police don't want it, the fire people don't want it. They've talked many times to the council, and everybody's ignored. I don't even remember ever being notified about this road diet. I kinda found out about it through the grapevine. And the more I read into it, the more upset I get, because this was initially started for roads that had ten thousand cars or less, and now we've got like twenty-one thousand cars going on Nine Mile, and it's gonna cause a lot of congestion, it's going to cause a lot of people to have to go a lot slower, they're gonna be angry, they're gonna wanna get home, they're gonna be endangering the children by getting off Nine Mile and going down the side streets. So I think it's a very bad idea. I'm not gonna let up with this because it's wrong for East Point. It just doesn't work here. We are the Motor City. We're designed to be, have cars. And, and putting pedestrians and bicycle riders ahead of people like me, no, that doesn't work for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Going back to the Nine Mile traffic study that we talked about at the last City Council meeting, traffic volumes were collected on February thirteenth and fourteenth of two thousand twenty-four, which was during the winter and during the construction, I think water main construction was going on at that time. Regardless, the average daily traffic was twenty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-one. We determined that arterial speeds wouldn't change, so actually, to me, that sounds like there's not really much traffic calming with the road diet if the arterial speed doesn't change, and the intersections would stay about the same. The problem was with the queue increases, the length of queuing at, not only in the road diet area at Schroder and at Kelly, but even as far as Grashit, I ninety-four, all along the ways. When they look at that, they look at the A.M. peak and P.M. peak hours, but if you look at the hourly traffic, for example, on February thirteenth, from seven A.M. to eight P.M., the average hourly traffic is fourteen hundred cars an hour. Those are, that's higher than the A.M. peak volume of thirteen ninety-three. As of December first, the fire department has responded to three thousand eighty-three calls, which is a little more than nine calls per day. Obviously, they use Nine Mile Road, the, the fire station is on Nine Road, Mile Road. MedStar has responded to three thousand three hundred and thirty-five calls, which is about ten per day. Now, MedStar, their ambulances are located at Nine and Kelly and Nine and Grashit, so obviously, they use Nine Mile Road. Police calls are just over twenty-five thousand this year, which is about seventy-five per day. Not all calls come from the police station. Obviously, there's patrol cars out in the neighborhoods, but Nine Mile is the main thoroughfare, and even if you're looking at twenty percent coming right from the station, that's at least fifteen police cars per day. So totaling all of that, we're talking about ninety to ninety-five emergency vehicles that are cruising around East Point every single day, and they are going to run into, on Nine Mile, queue lengths of up to two hundred feet, some four hundred feet, on Nine Mile, all day long. How are they supposed to get through with the road diet? I feel that pursuing three lanes is irresponsible and even negligent when you are impeding response times for people who need emergency services, even if it's slowing them down by two minutes, three minutes, six minutes. If your house is on fire, if your child has stopped breathing, if there's an intruder in your house, those two minutes, three minutes, six minutes, I think would make a difference to people.
You have about thirty seconds.
You know, your initial reasoning for this road diet is more for beautification and fun and social aspects, but I really feel that safety, the safety of the community is a priority, and I really hope that over the holiday you are rethinking going back to the five lane plan for the entire, entire Nine Mile. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Karen Moragian, East Point resident. I wanna take this time to discuss several animal-related issues as we're right around the corner from the holidays and how easy it is to, you know, either not connect the dots, or I do wanna say this while it's fresh in my memory, to acknowledge Mr. Albright, Max, he is in my prayers for continued health. Chief Haynes, that your horse also is successful with her medical issues and recovery. So I'm gonna start with this quote from Leo Tolstoy, and his quote is, "Flesh eating is simply immoral, as it involves the performance of an act which is contrary to moral feeling. By killing, man suppresses in himself unnecessarily the highest spiritual capacity, that of sympathy and pity towards living creatures like himself, and by violating his own feelings becomes cruel. As long as there are slaughterhouses, there will be battlefields." I've been a staunch advocate for animals since nineteen ninety. Man, I am not slowing down anytime soon. I will always advocate for the animals. I think there's a lot of disconnect, and, you know, the last part of his quote is so profound that as long as there are slaughterhouses, there will be battlefields, because it's just in complete opposition. How can we, as this civilized society, sit there and condemn the brutality and the heinous killings of humans and then not even bat an eyelash when that same heinous, cruel, brutal act is inflicted on the animals? Because, well, you know, their lunch, breakfast, dinner, something to wear on, your hat, your hands, your coat.
You have thirty seconds.
So people, thankfully, fur has definitely fallen out of fashion, but I wanna make sure people understand the horrific cruelties involved, the gassing, the general toll, electrocution, their necks being snapped, they're being drowned. You know, it's just disgusting. Wearing fur is not a fashion statement. You're telling the world you literally don't give a damn about the plight and the suffering of the animals. So if you want animals for the holiday season, think very carefully, do your research, adopt, don't shop. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the first hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on December third, two thousand twenty-four?
Mayor, I would move that we accept the minutes of the special meeting on December third, two thousand twenty-four.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
All right, can I get a motion for the regular minutes, December third, two thousand twenty-four?
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion we approve the regular meeting minutes of December third, two thousand twenty-four?
So again.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
All right, we have no scheduled hearings or unfinished business. Reports from administration, and we'll move on to our city manager, Ms. Walton.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to give a, and I'm glad Darren is here, huge thank you to your team over at DPW for all of the work that you guys put in for the tree lighting and the lights and the median and the decorations in general. You guys put a lot of effort into it, and we appreciate it, and it made the tree lighting incredible, and even surprised me in some areas that I didn't see the lights coming on. So thank you and your team, also to Juanita for organizing it and all of the departments that were involved in making that come true, along with the board and commission mixer. I know her trivia was a huge hit, and I know the library commission, the Friends of the Library, really take that mixer and put a lot of effort in, into the activities and everyone showing up. So thank you to all of our members that really made those events special. As a reminder, city halls closed on December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and the thirty-first for the holidays. We're in the budget and planning phase right now, so most of our departments are busy, especially with the audit finishing, entering their budgets, and will be moving into scheduling. We did receive an email from Ms. Nicholas, and we have a engineering meeting this week, so we'll be having conversations with the questions that you've brought up regarding the, the traffic study. So thank you for that. And with that, Mayor and Council, I can answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, we'll move on to our finance director's report, Mr. Blom.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Tonight, when the audit topic comes up, I got a brief, brief discussion on some of the highlights, both for council and for the public, and that's all I have for this evening.
All right, any other questions for him? Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor, Members, Council. In light of tonight's closed session, I'm gonna save my voice for that time period, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that, which may happen this evening.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Item A, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash twelve forty-four to amend Chapter Two, Article Five, Division Six, Police Traffic Safety Advisory Commission.
So moved.
Support.
All right, motion support to give second reading. Are there any comments or questions on this?
Just one brief comment for me, Mr. Mayor. I just think we should be just keeping the police oversight portion of the ordinance in, same thing I've said at previous discussions, that's all.
Great, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
No.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item B, adoption of resolution number twenty-four dash nineteen ninety-four, establishment of municipal employees' retirement system, authorize signatories. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion we adopt resolution twenty-four dash nineteen ninety-four, murders authorize signatories and authorize the city clerk to execute all necessary documents.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
All right, item C, receiving and file the fiscal year twenty-four audit report. I will turn it over to Mr. Blom.
Thank you. At your ta, desk, you have a, your hard copy audit, and within the cover is a packet with some printouts that I use for highlighting. First, I would like to thank my staff for keeping the department running smoothly all year. It makes the information accurate and available for the audit to go smoothly and timely. Second, I'd like to mention, as mentioned at last week's audit presentation, the city received an unqualified opinion on our financial report with no additional comments, and this is the highest level that can be attained. The audit is available at the state treasury's website. It was uploaded to the city's website at about three o'clock today, and there will be two hard copies available at the library as soon as they're picked up. Items I'd like to highlight on the first page, it's page four point five of the audit, specifically in the general fund area, you'll see at the bottom that the general fund increased its fund balance by one million five hundred and eight, sixty-eight thousand dollars. The revenues exceeded budget by over seven hundred thousand. However, four hundred and eighty-four thousand of that was a required accounting adjustment, and it's not operational money, so it's kind of, I call fake money. The rest of the increase, though, came from excess investment earnings and the opioid funds that we received. The original budget for, excuse me, investment income was two hundred and twenty-five thousand. It was amended during the year up to five hundred and sixty-five thousand, and we actually ended the year at eight hun, excuse me, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. We exceeded our budget by two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. We also received some last-minute opioid funds from some new lawsuit settlements, and this led to a budget exceedance of a hundred and sixty thousand. The excesses were partially offset by continued decline in court fines and fees. This revenue item came in under an already reduced budget by almost four hundred thousand. This was partially offset by some bond forfeitures, but it was a net decrease compared to budget of a hundred and seventy-six thousand. On the expenditure side, it was all people. We had some continual staff shortages, and our people cost came in under budget by one point two million for the year. All of those combined is what led to the vast improvement on our general fund. The next page is the balance sheet found on page four point three of the, of the audit report, and I wanna highlight the general fund again. There you see a restricted item listed as healthcare in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand. This is all of the opioid funds we have received through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. We have not spent any of that money, and therefore it's restricted. This is a discussion for another day, but I wanna make sure council is aware of it so that we can deal with it. The next area is on the next page, four dash twenty-two of the audit report, and it's under the stewardship section. As you know, we increased our fees, the building fees, last year. Even with that increase, we still had a current year shortfall compared to expenses of twenty-five thousand dollars. And the cumulative shortage in the building area, and this is only since two thousand, because that's when it was required to start being tracked, is over six million dollar shortfall. That's, that's a lot of money. But there is good news. None of it's, none of it's really bad. The next item is, can be found on page four point one of the audit, and that is one that shows governmental activities in total. The net position-
Andy? Sorry, can I ask one question real quick about the construction code?
Yeah.
I guess that the six point three million, I guess, we're not gonna be able to, I guess, just to, from a high level, we can't catch up because you can't just start charging more than it costs to do things, right?
We can actually make that up. It just, it would take a long time. I mean, it took us, what do we have, twenty-four years to get to that point?
Yeah.
But what it does allow us to do because of the cumulative shortage is if the fees do exceed the expenses, we're not, it's not a problem because we have such a deficit, and we can slowly chip away at it. I'd love to just break even. That has never happened since I worked here, so.
This was pretty close, though.
It's, that's about as close as it's gonna get, yeah. Okay, the, yeah, the next part is on the net position, the governmental activities. You'll see at the very bottom, it is a negative three point nine million dollars. That is significantly reduced. That is significantly reduced since we, well, it's a negative because we had to start recording the pension and the retiree healthcare underfunding. The next page shows you kind of a running tally since we had to start recording those entries. We started off at almost $32 million negative, and with the pension and healthcare changes we've made over the years, it has come down, like I said, to $3.9 million. And speaking of pension funding, the next page shows you a historical look at the pension with the assets, the liabilities, and the underfunded amount. The pension had dropped as low as 49% funded. We've slowly got it to climb back up, especially with the last report. Thank you, Senator Kleinfeld. We're up to 57% funded. So, that has helped because our required contributions will slowly decline. And the next page shows retiree healthcare. Same thing, the assets and liabilities. We've gone through a program of buying out employees from their retiree healthcare. So, what you'll see is the assets have held fairly steady, but the liability has dropped significantly. We are at 51% funded in this area where anything over 40% funded is considered good throughout the state. I would like to highlight revenue share. This, again, is a running tally over the years of what we received. The peak was in 2001, at $4.7 million in revenue share. It then declined as the state ran into budget issues themselves. The state has slowly built it back, and this year, we finally exceeded 2001. There's 23 years of inflation built in, but we are actually now finally above 2001. And then the final chart is on infrastructure spending. I think this is important to look at of how active we've been in the city. Over 10 years, we have put $80 million into roads, sidewalks, water, sewer. Over $50 million alone just in the water sewer side, and we have a $20 million project that's going to be starting up real soon. So, this is something that I think this city should be proud of, which we've been able to do. And not a penny of that water sewer infrastructure came from the water sewer rates. I want to point that out, too. That comes from the ready-to-serv charge only, and grants. And that's all I have.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Blom?
I had just one question. They had mentioned that we should have resolutions about procurement cards and things like that, and I was remembering back when I first was on city council, we had talked about that. I don't think we, it looks like we maybe didn't approve it the way we should have. There's no resolutions assigned, but we had, in 2015, that's when we started using procurement cards so we could actually buy things on the internet.
Yeah, we have a credit card resolution, but I don't think we ever got around to doing a P-card resolution.
Okay, so I think we should probably, you know, set that in stone and do the right resolutions as suggested by Yo and Yo. That's all. Thank you for all the other info.
All right, do we have any other questions for Mr. Blom? All right, can I get a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item D, approved purchase of the new backhoe for Department of Public Works and Services. Would anyone like to open up with a motion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion. A motion that we purchase a new 2024 CAT 420XE backhoe under the current MyDeal contract and number 24000000165 for $156,775.94 for Michigan CAT of Macomb. And I also want to just add to the motion that we authorize the selling of the old CAT for, let me just triple-check my number, for $35,000, the 2012 Caterpillar.
Second.
All right, does anyone have any questions? I know Mr. Palucci's here, but...
Yeah, Mayor?
Sure.
I think it's, would be wise for us to point out to the citizens a little bit more than what Councilman DeMonico said. In the budget, there was $104,867, or $867, and then, as Councilman DeMonico said, we got $35,000 for trade-in, and then we got $18,600 for the auction 2000 CAT. So, that covers $156,775.94. So, before anybody has a heart attack that we went out and spent all that money, there was money there. So, that's great, and praise God for the people over at the DPW that they're able to get that money for trade-in, and it didn't cost us anything this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, any other comments? All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Only comment, let Michigan CAT know they keep spelling East Point wrong on all the correspondence. It's one word.
I was thinking that was probably what we put in the first name and last name. That's what I thought when I saw that.
So, item E, discussion on appointments to Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. This is something that I requested that we have on the agenda last time. I have a couple of thoughts I want to share. Is there, would anyone else like to, well, Ms. Shadlick, you're on there. Is there anything else or anything you want to jump in with about that commission before I start?
Having been on the commission for almost a year now, I have noticed a few things that are important for the commission itself. First of all, I'm not sure if we want to divide the commission into two. You know, maybe, maybe think about it just as a possibility in terms of an arts commission and then a cultural diversity commission. Sometimes it's difficult to get quorum, so I know the importance of having members on the commission because we've waited in the past, sometimes there was one particular incident, we waited 45 minutes to get quorum. So, you know, it is important to have people who are interested, who want to participate. I know in the past, we've received some applicants who have signed up, and I have a couple of names, I'm not sure if I can utilize those names or not. If I could just mention a couple of them, you know, we had Linda Jarvey who had applied for it, Steve Fleck, Michelle Lubinski, they had all applied for positions as well. And I know we could definitely use the members. I believe we recently, I believe it was last month, we had one member who had to resign for obvious reasons, and, you know, being down members, it's difficult for that commission, so.
Anyone else want to jump in before I do? So, a couple of things. So, this technically, although it's a mayoral appointment, if there's candidates that any council member feels, you know, wants to be considered, I'll get those names from you. Thank you. And the other thing was before, I guess, filling these appointments, and there's several commissions that we have to get some vacancies filled. I see Gary in the audience, he knows with parks. I was actually going to bring up the idea of dividing the commission into a cultural diversity commission and an arts commission. I know when this commission was created, back when it was created, I was on council, and I was a little concerned, it was a lot to put on one commission. I know that several previous arts commission members, or ACDC members, have told me that they were pulled in multiple directions with what their focus is. So, I would like to look at having an arts commission and a cultural diversity commission separately, one geared more towards events, education, celebrating diversity, and one that is, I guess, just more general art in the community. How does council feel, I guess, about that?
I think that'd be great if we had, you know, enough interest in to be able to do that. I think that would be great. I think both then would be served better, probably, because, you know, like you said, I think everyone on the commission has probably more of a passion for one or the other, and so if they could just focus all of their time, their volunteering on the one half that they're more passionate about, makes sense to me.
Yeah, Mayor, I agree. There's nothing worse than putting people on a commission that there's no way that they can fulfill their obligation. So, by dividing it up, as you're suggesting, I think it'd bring it back to the next council meeting. If you find enough people for both commissions, that would be great.
For me personally, I would be curious to know what the current members think about that. And then also, a question that I would have is if you divide the commissions, now do people have to reapply because they apply to ACDC, not to art or cultural diversity? And then if they had to reapply those that are currently serving, would they be given preference to continue serving on their respective choices? The other thing that I, that I kind of think about, and I mean, I guess, it really, I think it weighs heavily with me more so with the current members and how they feel, because I don't really necessarily want to make that decision for the commission, and especially if they have a difference of opinion. I understand a need to try to make quorum. You know, that happens on other boards and commissions as well. The other thing is because I can understand people having a preference of art or culture, cultural diversity, but sometimes that is part of cultural diversity, too, is the art that comes from the respective cultures, hence, a lot of the museums that are in downtown Detroit and other respective places. And so, if dividing that, is it really solving the problem? Because ultimately, with boards and commissions, is we need membership, we need vacancies filled, and we need people to attend the meetings. So, before I would say, yes, let's divide it and go forward with it. I mean, I think me personally, if you asked me today, I would be more inclined to leave it as is, but still taking into consideration the thoughts that were brought up by the rest of council. But I would also be interested in knowing what the current members on the ACDC think about that, because they are putting in their time and efforts, and they've signed up for it ultimately. And the thing about the commissions is nobody has their arm twisted to sign for anything. We just need people to show up, and I understand that things come up. Life happens, but that's also the beauty of communication. So, before I would say yes or no, I would be interested in hearing how they feel about that, if they would, I mean, however they may want to communicate that. It's just my thoughts about it.
Sure, do you know when the next ACDC meeting is, by chance?
January 13th.
Okay, I do hope to make it to that. I wanted to speak to them, too. I wanted to bring it up at council first before I had talked to the members. And I have, to a couple of your points, I think there very well will be members that will want to serve on both commissions. I think of it as just dividing up the labor a little bit. I look at events like Juneteenth, and that's not really an art event. That's more of a historical diversity event. And I think there's, there's just some things that could be, I think, more efficient split in to do. And there's definitely overlapping, of course, with all of that. But I think the, what we've had from councils, a majority would like to look at that. What would administration prefer as the next step? Just, or maybe working with Ridge to draft an idea of what that language might look like?
Sure, we can draft, like, look at some different organizations and their commissions, and then just draft two different to bring forward and see what the council thinks of those.
I think that would be appropriate, and it could be pretty rough, I think. And I know Juanita's not here, I was hoping to catch her at some point. I think she might have some input, too, on ideas for that, so. All right, that's all I have for this. Did anyone else want to add anything?
Maybe just quickly about particular members for either the joint board or the two separate boards, whichever way we go. I know I've talked with some names mentioned by Councilwoman Shadlick. Steve Fleck, I've talked with him before. He seemed quite interested in art. He's done some other project, public projects before. I think the one major one he was talking about was in, I think it was either Hamtramck or Highland Park. Hamtramck. And then I know I've talked, I had a lengthy conversation at, knocked on her door one time, Linda Jarvey, and she seemed pretty interested in the city business, so those two. The, Michelle Lubinski, I don't think I know her, or there's two other, when I was going backwards on our list of applicants, there was Harry White Jr. and Marnisha Braggs were two other applicants somewhat recently. I think these were all in the last year, maybe. And then also Darlene Whitby, but she's been elected to the school board now, so might want to touch base back with her again before we try to get her signed up for something else. She, she might have a lot on her hands now.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to, I didn't mean it.
No, I'm all set.
Okay, I apologize. One other thought is that just for the sake of, if there are names to be brought forward currently, I believe that we should fill those vacancies because you don't want to run into the issue of trying to meet up with them at a meeting, and then there's no quorum. And so, if you go to a meeting to discuss with them the idea, and I think even with those that you may bring forward currently, I would let them know what's being considered, and possibly if it goes forward to divide the two commissions, if the plan is potentially to give those currently serving first choice of whichever one they decide, I think that should be communicated, too. But for the sake of being able to make quorum, if there are names currently available, I would, I would suggest, or I ask that you guys would at least fill those vacancies so at least they can meet until such a decision is made as to what's going to happen with either leaving it as one commission or splitting it into two, just so that they can have their quorum and continue to meet until such a decision is made.
With all due respect, I think if we appoint somebody now to that commission, you know, in the hopes of them attending the January commission, and then say, hey, we were thinking of dividing this, that kind of seems futile to do if we are asking their opinion. If you want to do that and you want to ask their opinion, and I understand it's a mayoral appointment, but if we're going to contemplate dividing that group into two commissions, I don't know if we would want to appoint somebody now and then say, hey, we're also thinking of doing this. It kind of is counterproductive.
I don't, I would disagree respectfully because they still have to meet. They still have an obligation that they signed up for. And so, if you don't make quorum, if you're saying that it's hard to make quorum currently, are you going to be able to make quorum in January? What if you don't make it until March? This gets delayed, so at least they can continue to meet with understanding what the intention is. They may want to keep it as one commission, you know, if you talk to the members. I don't know what that will be, but I wouldn't hamstring them or risk hamstringing them from being able to meet just until a decision is made. That literally can take as much as a month, or it may take longer. So, I don't think that is counterproductive. I think it's allowing people to serve as they signed up to serve. So, I would have to respectfully disagree with you about it being counterproductive. If they, as commission members, haven't brought that forward, then now I would question, well, where did the idea come from? And I understand that you serve as liaison, but is it their idea or someone else's idea? Is it your idea? Is it your belief? And so, like, no, I don't believe that it would be counterproductive, but I respectfully disagree, and I, you know, we'll leave it at that.
So, just so you're aware, this is something I've been thinking about for years. I've talked to multiple people about it, so I think it's just kind of been one of those things that's floated around. I'm not going to put anyone forth today, but I'll think about that. Maybe I will do it at the next meeting, regular meeting. about that. Maybe I will do it at the next meeting, regular meeting. Actually, I'll talk to the commission members before next meeting, kind of figure out how I want to navigate that. So any other comments?
No. I mean, and I, I appreciate that. It's definitely not the first time that I've heard the idea. So, you know, it's not new to me. It's maybe new to this meeting. But yeah, at least if there's some kind of discussion, I feel like at least we can make a more informed decision. And that's, I believe that we all want to do that.
No, that's, that's fair. And I, I think the reason it's kind of coming up now is just because we're in a situation with so many vacancies. If it was going to be split, now would be the time to do it. At least that's what I, what I figured when, when I was thinking about this. So, all right. Any other comments?
Oh, I'd also want one more. I'd like to thank all of those commission members who are currently serving. You know, it's, it's definitely a dedication to your city to serve in any capacity. I know we've got a lot of commissioners, members who actually serve on several commissions. I mean, Wanda Moody, for example, serves on planning commissions. She also serves on AC/DC. So I, you know, I do commend those people for their service and their dedication to our city, and do appreciate all those who serve in those capacities. So I don't want it to seem as if I'm being flippant about it.
All right. Any other comments? We will move on to, actually, on this item F, approval of removal of member from the parts commission. I meant, when we did the approval of the agenda, I meant to actually request removing that. I, so I, I don't think I've seen the correspondence. I understand that the member either declined or resigned from the position. Is that correct?
I think he has a conflict. Kim, did you get that correspondence from him or Brianna? I think Brianna may have it. We can forward that on.
So I, I don't necessarily need it. It's just that anyone can resign without our approval, so I don't think we have to vote to remove him. So unless anyone on council disagrees, I would like to just move on to item G.
Should we accept, okay, sorry. Should we accept resignations though? I think in the past, at least, it's been confusing if there was a resignation letter that maybe went to one or two people and the rest of council didn't even know. And then it might be just easier if we did accept resignations, then we know it's vacant too here.
Oh, I think that's fine. I just didn't want to motion to remove him. A motion to accept his resignation, I think doesn't have a negative connotation, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah. And I do believe it was a scheduled conflict that came up. Kind of like one of those like things.
So I guess if that's appropriate, then I'll motion to accept Mr. Plumpy's resignation from the parts commission.
A second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. Item G, approval of reappointment of planning commission members. Would anyone like to make a motion or comment?
Yes, if I may. Mr. Mayor, I have two names that have requested to be reappointed. Their term would expire December 31, 2029. And that's Kimberly Naylor and Wanda Moody.
Support.
All right. Any comments?
Did have one quick question. I think Ms., Ms. Moody's term, I think, was one year off from what the website said. Sorry, let me pull it back up. I don't remember. Right now, her current term expires 12/31/2023. So I think her term should now end, if reappointed, 2028. And then Ms. Naylor's is correct, though. Hers expires 12/31/2024 and would go to 2029.
Does that sound correct? I see Ms. Holman nodding her head. Would you like to amend your motion with those dates in mind? Or if you have a question?
Sure. No, I'll, I'll amend my motion from whatever he said.
All right. Do you still support?
Yes, support.
Okay. It's not the correct.
There's a reason we do that, though, because then that's alternating. So, you know.
I just didn't, I just didn't, and I just didn't write down what you were saying. That's why, that's why I said whatever you said.
Yeah, I think we unfortunately, at one point, we did like three-year terms or something, and now a lot of the terms end on the same years. They were supposed to stagger a little more.
Right.
Maybe one day we can address that, but not, not at the moment.
All right. Well, we have a motion to support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. Moving on to payroll and bills, would anyone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I would move that we pay the bills in the amount of $3,895,119.89.
Second.
All right. Are there any questions regarding the bills? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlik?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the second hearing of the public. The second hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Good evening, Mayor Kleinfeld. Councilmember Gary Sasseke, East Point resident. Again, I just want to reinforce what everybody said tonight about boards and commissions. We are now back into a critical stage. If we have one person absent, we don't have a quorum. So I would hope that the residents really start getting a little more involved within the boards and commissions. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
You too. You too.
Anyone else?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. I don't go on Facebook very often. I try and stay away from it. But I happened to notice today on the residents page, there was a gentleman that's actually put a poll out on Facebook for the residents as far as what's important to the residents as far as the city. And he had put, you know, many different things. Right now, as of, you know, when I looked before I left for here, there were about 800 votes, and the top vote-getters were crime and public safety, water, property taxes. You know, those are kind of the fundamentals of the city. And I think that's really important for everybody. You all do a lot of work and do a lot for the city here. And I really feel that keeping in mind the, the foundation and the fundamentals is the most important before you can start building on things that are more fun and attractive and, you know, exciting for people. You know, if the foundation of your house is crumbling and you ignore it and decide to paint your front door, it might look really nice and pretty, but, you know, the foundation of the house is still crumbling. So, and that is something that I feel like the, the city could be doing, putting out some kind of poll or survey to communicate with residents to find out what is important to them. You know, going back to Nine Mile here, you know, the survey that was put out in 2021, that was crafted by McKenna, our city planner, said nothing about road reconstruction. There was nothing about traffic or road. Everything was about, you know, what would you like to see on Nine Mile Road? And, and, you know, the residents answered, you know, talking about beautification and maybe more grocery stores and outdoor dining and things like that. And somehow that got extrapolated into, we need to reduce the lanes of the road. And I don't feel that that is important to people. You know, we, we really could be concentrating on what's important to people. And you all probably know better than me, the best ways to reach people, social media. You know, you put in a flyer with the water bill, you know, when, when, when priority was getting after us, saying that they were going to charge you more money because people aren't recycling properly. Two weeks later, there's a flyer with my water bill.
You have 30 seconds.
That, that could be something that, you know, you tuck in with people's water bills every month, or put in the newsletter every month that would allow them to take a survey or a poll to help guide you better. You know, that's, again, I appreciate all that you do for the city. I believe you all have good intentions, and I hope you all have a very Merry Christmas and a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Part two for the animals. So there's the issue of dogs and cats being left outside, and we need far stricter enforcement with that, whether it's animal control or if they're not on duty. We need the police officers to go knock on the door, not just drive down the street and go, eh, I didn't hear anything. So, you know, I mean, it's in the ordinance. And, you know, this, people need to be more proactive. They need to report it. You know, you've got dogs out there barking, barking, barking. And, you know, the, the temperature is set. I want to say it's either 42 or 43 degrees. The temps can't be any lower than that. And unfortunately, people are just being very irresponsible with their animals. And, you know, we actually would need akin to Macomb County Animal Control. We, we truly need that many animal control officers here in East Point, the way people are being irresponsible when it comes to animals. Shifting gears, you know, these winter fests that are popping up, you know, now, now it's another way to exploit animals using wildlife and reindeer. No, this is animal exploitation. No, it is not freedom of religion under the First Amendment. You got owners, you know, this has been going on, I don't know, maybe about the last 10 years. They're not paying attention. You got the public feeding these animals. They're getting sick. And then there are certain cases, the animals have died because they were fed the wrong food. I mean, nobody should have wildlife, period. They belong in the wild. As far as animals, you know, they're not disposable. You either take them for life or don't take them at all. If you're going to come up with an excuse to get rid of your animal, you never should have had them to begin with. Leapingbunny.org. I strongly encourage everybody, look at the cruelty-free compassionate shopping guide. Yes, it's going to cost a little bit more out of pocket, but you are literally saving the lives of animals and sparing them the atrocities of horrific cosmetic testing, you know. Why in the hell? You're going to drop toxic chemicals into the eyeballs of rabbits restrained in head socks?
You have 30 seconds.
I have rabbits in that. You know, the man who invented the drowsy irritancy test, which I just referred to, he even said, that test is worthless. These companies should not rely on it. Really quickly, hunting is not the answer. There's communities complaining deers are overpopulated, you know, and it's all about, you know, kill, kill, kill. No. The Humane Society of the United States found that darting and using birth control was highly effective. That is the route to go.
Thank you.
And, god damn. There was one other thing, but I ran out of time.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to mayor and council reports. Councilwoman Baker?
Thank you. I'm just going to say to everyone, thank you for coming out, offering your thoughts, and being involved, reaching out, letting us know the concerns that you have. And then I hope that you all have a great holiday, great and safe holiday. That's it.
Councilman Curly?
Thank you, Mayor. Show of hands, how many are familiar with Christmas in the trenches? Two. I'm going to tell you the story. I'm not going to talk politics. I'm going to talk to about an incredible true story. In 1914, when Americans were fighting the Germans, they were in a huge field. And it was on Christmas Eve, late in the night. The Americans are in their trenches, and they hear this noise. And they finally figure out it's the Germans are singing Christmas songs, singing Christmas songs. And the next morning, it's Christmas Day. Sun comes up bitter cold, and the Germans begin to come out of their trenches, and the Americans begin to come out of the trenches. They shook hands, they hugged each other, they gave each other gifts, like maybe cigarettes or whatever. And then they played a game of soccer with an, with a tin can that was crushed. Rumors go that the Germans won by a score of three to two, which may have happened or not happened. But the fear and distrust gave way to humanity. And it was a wonderful day. And they went back to their trenches when it got dark. The generals are very upset with it, from the military, particularly in America. And they ended up the next year, on Christmas Eve and Christmas, wouldn't let the troops out, but they bombed the other, the enemy all day long on Christmas Eve and Christmas, because they didn't want them to come out there. This rumor goes that the troops that were the Germans, on the German side, and the troops that were on the American side, were replaced because they couldn't kill each other. And I think it's an incredible story to think about. But I do have a wish. And my wish is this, that Christmas could happen in the halls of the United States Congress. Wouldn't that be wonderful? That would be great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pachadlik?
First, I'd like to thank our finance director, Randy, for the audit, all their, in his entire office, for all the assistance and all the hard work. I'm sure that was many, many hours that you guys put into that. So I'd like to commend you for, and your staff, for all of the hard work you've done. I'd like to thank everyone who came out for the mixer, all the boards and commissions, for all their service. Again, it was a nice social event and a good opportunity to thank all of those who serve on the boards and commissions. And it was very well attended. And thank you to the library for the rousing game of Jeopardy, Christmas Jeopardy, or holiday Jeopardy. At any rate, it was a lot of fun. And then last, lastly, I'd like to touch on something that Randy had mentioned about. Thank you, Veronica Kleinfeld. You know, we, we've mentioned it a couple of times before. Mariah's mentioned it in her report. But we've never formally done any kind of a formal thank you to Senator Veronica Kleinfeld. And I know other cities have done that. She's, you know, obviously being a resident of this community and all the money that she has brought into our community and the hard work that she's done. I mean, I think there should be some type of a recognition and just a plain and simple thank you. So I would like to suggest that maybe we do something like that and acknowledge the contributions she's made.
Great idea.
So that's all. And I'd also like to wish everyone a very happy holiday and a Happy New Year. And just to remember those who are suffering at this time as well, you know, we all like to focus on the positive things, but it's, you know, there's a lot of people out there who are lonely or suffering or depressed or, you know, going through some very difficult times. And I would like to, you know, send positive thoughts and prayers their way as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman D'Amico?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Councilman Curly, your story of Christmas in the trenches, and as Councilwoman Pachadlik was mentioning, was subject of a trivia question at trivia at the board and commission mixer. Yes. If you knew the year off the top of your head, you would have got it right. Yeah. That was a lot of fun. It's great to have an actual Jeopardy champion doing trivia at the city. So if you've never done trivia with Sandy Baker, next time she's out, she was on many episodes of Jeopardy. I think she won at least six episodes. And so, yeah, that was fun. Yeah, that was a great event. I think the holiday card that was created from all the pictures was very nice. It's up, I saw, by the city hall or city, city manager's office, or on Facebook, if you haven't seen it. Let's see, what else? Yeah, the tree lighting was also great. Yep, thanks. Yep, thank you to everybody that worked on that. Hope everyone enjoyed themselves there and hope everyone's checked out all the businesses that have covered their facade in holiday lights. That always looks very nice each year. And hopefully, yeah, everyone signs up for a board and commission. Obviously, we talked about that a bit tonight. There are plenty of vacancies, plenty of good things you can do for the community. And it doesn't take a huge amount of work. We'll expect a little work from you. But with just a whole bunch of people doing a little bit of work, we can do some pretty cool things in the community. So hopefully, some more people sign up. And then actually, Councilwoman Shadlock, you made me think of McRest then. I know I mentioned Turning Point at the last meeting, but I'll mention McRest, the homeless shelter I'm sure most of you are familiar with. If you're looking to donate or your time or money, look for them. They help a lot of homeless folks out in our area. And yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody. See you in 2025. I guess see all of you in a closed session in a few minutes, I think, but see the rest of you in 2025.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out today that came to share your opinions. Regarding the tree lighting, I'm just going to echo that the lights look great out there walking up today. I've never seen the pavilion look that good, so I'm very happy about that. The mixer did go really well. Thanks, thank you, administration, for putting that together. We don't really do that much for our commission members, so it's nice to have an event. The Jeopardy was a lot of fun. And, you know, it was just a fun time. It wasn't about winning. My team did win, though.
It wasn't about winning, was it?
So I also just want to...
You mean Ian won?
Listen.
Did you say your team won?
Yes, it did.
Isn't it funny that they had the mayor win?
Anyway, I also just want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Before we do that, I know this may sound silly, but we don't applaud very often, do we? But you're right about the decorations. Fantastic. So let's applaud for the, all the folks who did that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion then to go into closed session for the consideration of purchase or lease of real property pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two-six-eight-one-D and for attorney-client privilege pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two-six-eight-one-H.
Support.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Also, yes, for me, too. All right, we'll go into closed session at eight eleven.
Oops, sorry.
All right, back into open session at 9:19. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Support.
Please go liberal.
Councilmember. Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly. Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 9:20.
Got a fancy clock right in front of you.